Hello, good morning. How's it going? So, um, Amit, what's going on? Why am I, uh, in notification with a zero attachment?
Yeah, yeah, it's related to SoundCloud, so I check it and I'm fixing it. So like, let me say, tell you what is happening now. In SoundCloud, we're sending message content. I can see Jerry, uh, doing, uh, creating when it's content URL or something, it's creating a message. And that time, it's like, uh, it's good, I'm fixing it, so I will fix it.
Okay, but I didn't notice it a couple of days ago when we first released it.
This is, okay, let me, I'm gonna hijack this real quick, this is what I'm working on. Uh, so there are some songs that people are sharing and I'm getting confirmation from one of the users right now. That there is a premium SoundCloud subscription. And there exists songs that can only be listened to in SoundCloud with a premium subscription.
I see. So that, is that what's triggering this?
I'm getting confirmation from Josh right now. Cause, uh, one of the songs he shared was paywall. Uh, Chantel said she had issue with another, uh, song. So I'm, uh, getting that, requesting that from her and I'm gonna see what happens there and debug it.
Uh, that would make sense then why this wasn't reported day one. Cause it was working, um, and maybe still is, just not the ones behind the paywall.
Correct. Uh, I'm gonna find out from Chantel.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Um, alright, well Amit, what else are you working on?
Yeah, so yesterday, like, we talked about restriction of the notification. So first I work on like birthday notification, not birthday, sorry, let me, let me take my commit to whatever. So first was the favorite notification, so it will send only to just me, user.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a completed and created pull request for it. Next, I work on.
Will that also, I think we should follow the same, that same rule, uh, for what shows up in the alerts menu?
Uh, yes, yes.
Will you do that, or is it automatic? Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Second thing I work on, uh, let you know what is, which I'm gonna commit. So send profile pic update notification only once. Before any user update his profile picture, like yesterday we talked, we, we will not send every time, so we will send only one lifetime.
Um, say, say that one more time, what is it?
So when a user update his profile pic.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, just one notification per user.
One notification per user, yeah. So like, suppose if I change my profile picture two times in my lifetime, so you will only get one time notification.
Okay, you, you have that in, uh, QA?
And I created a pull request for it, so Jerry has to review it. Okay, third thing I work on, like, uh, you sent me a message on Slack, like, you, you are getting both the notification. Uh, when you invite a user and they are in your contact book also.
Yeah, I got those two that were for the same event. Which I thought we handled that a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago, but like I've seen some, there is some changes, so due to some changes, it's broken down, so I fixed that too.
What were the changes?
Uh, changes were like, we're putting in the queue, that, uh, earlier we were sending into the, uh, earlier we were sending, uh, directly as a notification, but now putting in the queue. And they check we are doing it, but, uh, comparison was different.
Okay, so are there any other similar breakdowns because we went to the queue?
No, no, no.
How, how can you be sure though?
I check it there.
Okay.
Yeah, I check it.
So now, how do you know that I'll get the right?
Uh, so I will tell you what was happening now, uh, let me see, can I see my screen?
Yeah.
So here, hmm, so this is the part, earlier like we are filtering the player ID, you can see here, filtering the player ID.
Yeah.
This player ID does not include the, uh, inviter player ID. That we were sending inside here, this player ID, notification pattern.
Okay.
Earlier, when it was working perfectly. Then later when we're putting in the queue, uh, we start checking here, hmm, that's. This is the, uh, who joined the contact circle here, here. You can see we are comparing now, we are putting in the queue. But like this line, I was causing problem, two, two, three, five lines. So earlier it was like the player, like it was this, this player ID. So it should be like, but it's, it's a property of player ID.
The, there was a D instead of an uppercase D?
Yes, yes.
How? Well, I, I don't understand, why isn't it copied and pasted?
I don't. So that I also create a pull request for it.
No, whenever there's an opportunity to copy and paste numbers and letters, things like that, it's always better. There's just been so many mistakes over the years of one letter or number being off. Because it's typed out, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be. Right, was, it was the same exact line of code from the original, just needed to be pasted over?
Not, not the exact line of the code, there was some logic also here, so, yeah.
Okay.
That's right, not exactly.
I see. And, and you said you did, you did a check to make sure we don't have any other issues?
Yeah, yeah, I checked it there, yeah, it should not be there. But we will test it on QA once it will deploy.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and.
One sec, so how would that affect? There's a, there's other logic that falls back to an SMS if the user doesn't receive the notification. Which, which one are we basing it on out of those two notifications? So, right, so if, if your friend joins. And they're in your contacts. And you don't get the notification, we send the SMS, is it, does that apply to both of those? Were we sending two SMSs?
Uh, so like, can be repeated when your friend join, we are sending, they did not receive the notification, we are sending SMS, correct?
Yeah, we fall back to SMS.
Yeah, so that is when target of player user ID, then we are sending.
And which one of those two, are both of those eligible to, to be replaced by an SMS? Imagine, they both are.
No, like only when target user doesn't have the player ID, then they will receive the SMS. Alright Jerry, I can see your code is here. When target user doesn't have the player ID, then we are sending the SMS.
What's, what's that?
Uh, this line of.
We should back up. Um, can you share your Slack message with Jerry that I sent you, so he can see? Okay, so yesterday, I got kinda duplicate, they're not duplicate notifications, but they're for the same event, worded, just worded different, but we used to have a rule to only show one. I can't see Slack yet.
Only show one, what, notification?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a visual. It, it, Amit, we only have a black screen here.
Yeah, wait, 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 like my Slack is loading, it's, uh.
It's, it's easy to explain when you see the. Are you able to open Slack, Amit?
Uh, yeah.
These two, I don't know, these two? Okay, so I got those two at the exact same time. Basically for the same event, I invited someone and, and they joined. Um, we used to have a rule to favor the top one. Because. Um, or let's, hold on a second. Yeah, because one was an invite, one is just simply, he's in my contacts, but because both were true, we would favor the top one. I also wanna make sure we are favoring the top one now, right?
Yes, favoring top one only.
Okay, so, um, now, we do have logic Jerry, you put in there, if there is no notification, push notification received, we would fall back on an SMS, but first of all, I'm wondering, does that apply to both of these, for one thing? And then, are we, were we sending two SMSs this whole time?
So. You convinced a friend to join, so you, are you talking about what I, what I worked on just the past couple of days, or is, you're talking about prior?
Prior. This happened, this has been going on for evidently for a while, I just haven't had an invite accepted through, um, one of my contacts for a while, so I didn't know. But evidently, users were getting both of these notifications. I'm wondering, if they didn't have notifications on, were they getting two SMSs?
No, I can confirm that we have never sent, you have convinced a friend.
We are not sending SMS.
From SMS. Now, we have sent Look Who Just Joined Circles many of times.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We have, we have, we've only sent Look Who Just Joined Circles via SMS, we've never sent the top one via SMS.
Okay, okay. Um, I suspect the top one has a better click-through rate, can, can, when you guys confirm, what are the click, click-through rates on these two?
I can get that.
Okay. Um, continue sharing that though, Amit, I wanna, I have another question. So. I'm assuming the top one's better, and it's, it's the case where I invited my contact, not just my contact joined, but I invited them and they joined. And I would like to do the same logic. Where we favor the top one, as if it's, if it does fall back to SMS, I don't know how much more difficult that is, but.
I have the answer for you on that question too, John, whenever you're ready.
Okay, go for it.
Uh, so, um, actually, we do have a difference between, we have two different variations that we send of a user just joined circles and has a much higher conversion rate.
Okay.
We have two alterations, uh, two variations, we have Look Who Just Joined Circles, um, with the clapping hands emoji. Uh, name is now in circles, would you like to follow them? That one has a, uh, four percent click-through. And then we have the one that you've received. Um, yeah, make sure this one you received, yes, this is the one you received, they wanna be friends with you.
Yeah.
That one has a seven percent click-through. And they both have equal numbers of sends.
Yeah, like it's enough of a sample for the.
Oh yeah, we got, we got five thousand confirmed deliveries on both.
Okay, so the, there's no denying, other ones about double, okay, so I'd say we turn off the four percent one.
Okay.
Let's do that, um.
And for the you convinced a friend to join.
Yeah.
That one has a seven point six three click-through.
Okay, so slightly higher.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, could we do the logic that would favor that top one if it does have to fall back on an SMS?
Yeah, if we're doing it through the, the queue, um. Let's see.
Cause we do it right now for the bottom one.
Yes.
So wait, you want the top sent through SMS?
Yeah, if, in the case where both of these are eligible.
Okay.
I want to favor the top one.
I see. Amit, do you want to handle putting this in the SMS queue, in the message queue?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, this picture, it looks right, you might wanna test that, make sure you can receive it.
Okay, don't, don't mess it up, because I, I can have a feeling it's really easy to overlook something and then
No, no.
There's two SMSs going out, or none.
I will test it before.
Okay, okay. So yeah, testing and double checking, triple checking.
Yeah.
Okay, cause, and then the emojis, you know, making sure you have the right ones. Does anything need to change? The bottom one is already. The bottom one is the one that, about the seven percent click-through rate, right? Jerry?
Uh, the one, yeah, the one at the bottom has the seven percent click-through.
Yeah, okay. Should do a couple more variations of this too, just to. Even seven percent seems low. The one that was at four percent, read that one to me again?
Uh, okay, four percent. It says, Look Who Just Joined Circles with the, uh, clapping hands, name is now in circles, would you like to follow them?
That one only got four percent.
Yep.
Yeah, we probably should have a variation on it. In case like you get five in one day, which can happen. Um, okay, I'll, I'll work on a new variation. Okay, so. Otherwise, I think we have this covered, so Amit, you feel confident you can get this right?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good, what else are you working on?
Yeah, these four notification and one is in progress, uh, John, like, uh, progress one, what it is, I will tell you. So like, when someone joined circles, like, someone joined group chat, that notification, I'm restricting to the group owner and our contacts only. So here, contact means your friends follower, right? And it.
Yeah, this is gonna be for the notification?
Uh, notification?
Yeah.
So contact means like friends and follower, correct?
Contact is in, is a phone number you have in your phone's contacts.
Okay, so that only I will limit, correct?
That's the only one we will be doing notifications for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there, can you please review my pull request, or this can, it contain three, just accept it there?
You know, I wanna expand that, I was, this was Tori's suggestion yesterday, because there are a lot of notifications around it. But I think she'd probably also agree that if it's a friend. Not just a contact. But a friend. You're both following each other, cause that's, that's still gonna limit it quite a bit.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, let's expand it to also, uh, friends, friends who join the group.
Friends and contact.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if your contact. You know, no more, I think about it, a contact, just contact only. Opens the door to some mischief a little bit, because if it's your ex-husband, ex-wife, or something like that, do you really care? Maybe you do, actually. I was gonna say, maybe you don't wanna know that they joined, but maybe you do wanna know they're doing. Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and leave it, I'll think about that a little bit more, so continue with the contact joining as the notification. And a friend joining the group. Okay. And, um. Speaking of this, I wanna show the groups that, um, users are in. We talked about this week or so ago. Um, has there been any work towards that? Yeah, I know we've done some front-end design work, but Jerry and Amit, do, do you recall? Like, what would it take to show, if I go to your profile, to see what groups, public groups you're in?
Yeah, I've seen a problem. I mean, it's not done yet, um, let, yeah, I would like to see the front-end design. Uh, because that would dictate probably whether or not it's best to keep it in a separate query, or maybe add it to an existing query.
Okay, okay, yeah, Chantel, when you get a chance, let's, let's look at that, um, and share your screen, we'll see the design for that, the work, work we're doing around showing what you're. Were you gonna say something, Amit?
No, I didn't say.
Okay, okay, well then, um. We'll take a look at that in a minute, and then Jerry, why don't you continue with an update?
Yeah, so I'm looking into the SoundCloud stuff. And kinda what I'm saying is about, there are some songs actually, that SoundCloud does not allow to be played in a player, and they're not just paywall. Let me, uh, I'm gonna screenshot my Slack real quick and show you what I discovered with Chantel. So, Chantel sent me this song, which is not loading in circles. But noticed how it's the cover art here in Slack. But if I share a song that works in circles in Slack, it's a player, like you can actually play this inside Slack.
Yeah, so I suppose you can't play the one above it?
Correct, you can't play the one above it. So what that means is now we're gonna have to go, uh, through all the songs, and if it's not playable in SoundCloud. Then we have to, um, we have to just embed the link rather than a player.
I see, and it'll take them to their website?
It'll take them to the website, but they can't listen to the app.
Why is it not playable?
Why isn't it, I'm going to assume that there is something like licensing with the artist. So some songs, let me, um, if I could find one of those songs that. Let's see, block, it returns blocked, so I was like, oh god, did they shut off our API access, but no, not quite. Um, okay, so here's one of the songs that Josh Roderson tried to share, and why is that not showing my screen? I thought I was sharing, okay, present my screen. There we go. Okay, so here's one of the songs that Josh Roderson tried to share, and notice it says unlock every try for SoundCloud go, and I actually can't play it or I get paywalled. So that's the case with this guy. Now with, um, this one. I'm noticing that this is like a verified artist with a lot of listeners, and I'm going to assume that, I wonder if this song has ads. No, no ads, but, um. That would be.
So you're playing it from SoundCloud, no problem?
Play it from SoundCloud, no problem, but the API um, returns. It returns streamable equal to true, however, it says my access is, or is it say, or my access is blocked. However, I, I was like, okay, I was like, is it our, is it our API token, like, are we restricted? But then I checked Slack, and now it makes sense why Slack right here is doing the cover art. But for this song, which is playable, has a player in Slack.
Yeah, so it's blocked in Slack too, so not just us.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to make an adjustment to make sure that we just share the link if it's not playable in circles, which sucks, it's a free song, but.
Yeah.
I'm surprised, like, usually what they would do in this case is like, they would like, uh, hard code ads into the song. Like, that's what we do, that's like what our podcast player does. Sometimes, so like, they'll just like, hard code ads before the podcast. And just let it play, which is fine, but I guess they just want that kind of metric, I don't know.
What, do you think this has anything to do with ads?
Because you have to go into SoundCloud on their web interface. Which makes me feel like that they want a higher level of control of what parts of the song you're on, and they want you to view the page. Um, and this is also a very, like, you know, this is a popular song. What the? Let's see, I'm, I'm literally getting an ad right now. Yeah, I literally just got an ad. I was trying to figure out what was talking, but yeah, it's on the lower right.
I see.
And it's not, I don't think, yeah, it's not gonna let me play, yeah, it won't let me play until that ad finishes.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, that's unfortunate that.
I know, man. Yeah, so I think what we're gonna have to do is with these artists we're partnering up with, um. We're gonna firm with them that the licensing on their tracks allows their songs to be embedded.
Right.
And I don't know if there's a way that it can be exclusively granted to us, the embedding, if that's something they wanted to do. Uh, I feel like it's just to cover all or none.
Yeah. Yeah, like when they upload it?
Right, when they upload it, they can basically just check a box on whether or not they want to allow it to be embeddable or not, and SoundCloud probably incentivizes you with more money, if you restrict it to only being on SoundCloud, stuff like that.
Yeah, okay. Oh, can we do a check to see?
Yes, I can definitely do a check.
Okay.
I didn't know this was a thing, I'm not a SoundCloud professional, I just found out this morning that they have a premium tier, so we'll figure that out. It's not hard, the API, the API returns it, so it's not gonna be a big problem.
I wonder if we can get a premium tier, some kind of, um. Some kind of enterprise, uh, agreement, where you can play it.
Here's just a, uh, something that I asked, I was like, can I subscribe and then get the song, and then they're like, nope.
Be able to fetch or stream this song directly, interesting. Do they have a solution there?
It, it says if you just need to track, you can embed it with an actual, with a SoundCloud widget, which is an iframe. Which respects subscription rules, but I don't know, a little iframe might be funky.
True. Slack doesn't bother with it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, what else we got?
Yeah, so with the, um. The web preview, I can, AOD was just kinda showing me some snippets, let me see if I can grab that link real quick. I was writing out the subscription logic to him. And where's the link I already want? Okay, push the latest code up, I gotta do this. Okay, oh, okay, it's looking better on you, this is even on desktop.
Okay.
You can see here, here's some of logic, he has reactions now, we have, uh, I told him to change this, this should be, um, time remaining, whatever, whatever was on, uh, Zenly.
Right.
Yeah, like if you try to, uh, see, you got me. You can get this, uh, share card, share card, share card, share card. Share card, so.
Reactions as well, it's like.
So we're getting there, I know, another thing is the tail, that was just a little nitpick, is you want the tail on the, uh, message bubble.
Yeah.
Uh, you got the system messages looking good. So we are, oh yeah, because you scroll to the top, you get this now.
Okay. So you get one pagination, like notable zero, like you get the first thirty?
Yeah.
I see.
I'm gonna see why, you scroll down, I'll just discover that, so I'll send that to, um, yeah, topics look to be good.
Oh, you can scroll those now?
Yeah, you can scroll, you can scroll, well, you always could scroll the topics, but if you wanna like go to like this one, you try to click a topic. It, it's literally just, it's just the giant Ts, which is kind of the point.
Right, exactly.
Yep, like, for this one, he actually has like the, uh, streaming services, the little SVG. And we're getting there, like.
Do I have a link to this?
What's that?
Do I have a link to this?
I'll share it with you.
Okay. Do I need, um, a login or anything?
No, just, just the link.
Okay, cool, I'll, I have um some stylish shoes, I'll let him know about.
Yeah, this is um. Also, this link is really interesting, so just as a note is that for the structure of this link. This john dot doe, we really don't care about it, it could be Tommy. Dunsworth, I don't know who that is, but. Oh, this is just kind of like a feel-good part of it.
Okay.
So this, this part of the URL doesn't matter, but what matters here is the end of it, so this is like. John Worthington's user key six, six, three, and then this is like the invite, the the password code for the group.
Okay.
So.
It'll have the user key of the person who invited you?
Well, the, yeah, the user, this would be the person who invited you six, six, three, and six, nine, five, one is like the password to view the group. So you can't just use this as a backdoor for in for every group, you know?
Yeah, what if it's a campaign type link? Not like. I guess it would still. Have the u- the user who generated it, their key.
What do you mean, like a campaign?
Not like a direct invite, but like something that. We post. On um, like a bio Instagram bio?
Th- this is, this is a campaign type.
It is, okay.
So if you go and you hit get circles and and this, this link is not valid because this is like hopping between QA and production. But this would be our normal, you know, campaign flow, the screen here.
Okay, right. When will that be? Why did you say it wasn't active?
Oh, because this is QA. And then when you hit get circles, it's just sending you to the production URL. So there's like no group that corresponds with this in production.
I see.
But that's why it says it is not valid.
Okay, I see. Okay, very interesting.
Yep, we are getting really close.
Yeah.
So aside from that. Oh, increment views, what is this? There's no way, oh, oh, okay, it's, it's this page, I was wondering, I was like, why would Aod? And I was like, there's no way Aod put tracking, you know, like, it's not right if so, but. It was this page that was doing the tracking. I mean, we can, we can put more tracking on this page.
When you say tracking, what do you mean?
Like even tracking, view tracking and stuff, on- once, once we get the design all solid.
That'd be great, okay.
Um, yeah, you can message with any concerns, I mean, you can keep me in the loop, anything about like preview cards.
Yeah, there's a ton, like, I would just. Decrease the width of these preview cards, they're, they're, they need more margin on the left and right. Um, I noticed an emoji inside of a blue. Bubble emojis, we, you know, if you do uh one, two, or three emojis, they don't need to be inside a bubble like that. Um, see how the names are nice and close inside the preview window, if you go. Down a little bit, like your name is very close to the message, but if you look in the main chat part of it, the names are floating way from there. Little fit, a lot of little things like that big, that thick gray bar that doesn't extend across the whole. Top underneath the topics there, that's a little weird.
I think that you'll only see this on, on like a web browser, see, it disappeared. This is like something because I'm on a desktop browser, emulating a phone. I don't think it'd be visible on mobile.
Interesting, okay, the main chat should stay fixed in a fixed position, that, that'd probably take them a little time, do you wanna tell them that one? Cause that's gonna take them some time.
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, let them know the main chat stays in a fixed position and everything scrolls behind it. The little preview window, time timer.
Oh yeah, that's, that's supposed to say time remaining, I know.
Yeah, and it's, you have transparency to it.
Okay, it should be transparent.
Yeah, like it should have gray.
Well, they actually, it is just a, it should probably be a little more transparent, I don't know if you can see it through my.
Yeah, I see, it's very light.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you should have a gray. Slight gray background to it, very subtly gray, but more transparency.
Okay, so if we're saying gray, uh, how about the gray of the preview card or lighter than that?
Well. About that darkness, but not that color, that's like.
Well, it'll, it'll be lighter if it we use this color, but add transparency to it. Because it would be like on a white background. Until you would get over this, but then you have like the shadow over it.
I'll have to see it. But yeah. Something like that. Just, I don't wanna match those, cause it should be its own. Like maybe the, where the A is in the top of that preview card?
Uh, A.
Like dot gray, but like with transparency.
Okay. Um, so it's a little darker, uh.
With a lot of transparency, it'll be very light.
Yeah, he, okay, he's testing more stuff. Yeah.
And the share symbol.
And then the messages, yeah. The share symbol is our round button. I don't know if you wanna add, and you also, just we have those little buttons when you're in the chat for a new topic or new event that followed the topics that. They're at the end.
No, we don't need that. Because they're not, they don't do anything, so it's all right.
Okay.
Also, probably the spacing versus shared a topic with large group tests. Um, that's a lot of line spacing. Right there, yeah.
Yeah, shared.
Yeah, that line spacing is really great.
Well, that one should have an image and.
But even so, it, the, all of them are like that, if you look at the other ones.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, see, the line spacing is good below with the um. Categories, art, subjects and themes, that's, that's, that's good line spacing.
Yeah, it's probably using the same line spacing, but I think at the top we're using a smaller font. So you have similar line spacing, but smaller font.
Possibly.
Thing, so we're getting there.
Yeah, no, it's looking really good, this is uh, I mean, I feel like it could be done. Day or two.
Yep, uh, now, no, this is just like the read-only version, uh, we're not. We're, we're not touching the subscription stuff yet, but once we get the display looking good, then we can work with the subscriptions.
That's true, yeah, so nothing's updating in here.
Right, but I mean, if Aod's typing. Another thing I wanted to see if he could do is like, see how when you go in and like it slings you to the bottom?
Yeah.
Actually, I think there's a way to do it that. Without the animation, I think just like s- send you straight to the bottom.
Animation's always better.
Well, okay, do you like how when you, just when you open the page, I started scrolling all the way to the bottom? Do you like how it animates and goes all the way to the bottom, or would you just rather it start from here? Because it, in the app, it starts from the bottom and then you have to scroll up.
Yeah, I mean, your very first time coming in, why wouldn't it start at the bottom? You're saying, if you come here for the very first time from a link, it's not at the bottom?
It's, it goes to the bottom, but you get this animation of you scrolling to the bottom.
Even from your very first arrival?
Yeah, all this is, is this is just hashed, it's just cached stuff, see?
Yeah, but I mean, nothing can be cached if you're arriving here for the very first time.
Correct, well, that's what I'm doing is I'm clearing my cache to show you that.
Okay, yeah, let's show, yeah, cause. Picks like a middle point and then scrolls you, or picks the top point and scrolls you?
Yeah, it starts from the very top and then it scrolls you down and it snaps at the bottom.
Actually, you know what? Yeah, I like it because it. Gives you a sense of what is there.
Yeah, I mean, you, I don't think you're that fast of a reader, you'll have to go back up and see it.
Yeah, and you might glimpse something that intrigues you, so. Yeah, that's fine, okay. Okay, yeah, looking good, so. Um, send me a link.
I sent, I sent it to you, I think, I think this is what I sent to you, yeah, I sent it to you. So um, that's another thing, I guess for the preview image, do you wanna use the preview image that we've been using for uh groups?
When you say preview image? Wh- where?
Uh, the preview image like for sharing. So like the one with the. This one. You wanna use this for like the preview image?
For the invite, um.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it depends on what. The um. What the, what the designated image is for the, like the main chat image, is what you mean?
So if you share it, if you share this link to this group preview and I message. Would it show this? Or like the ticket, if we have a custom ticket?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it would, it would this style, yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, so just like the same stuff, Melissa Locken invited you to a group chat in circles, no changes with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Who, okay.
Yeah, it'll have the number in the group and all that, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
It'll have all that fancy logic, so that's good, okay, and let me. Yeah, I got those PRs from Amet to look over. Uh, oh, big thing yesterday. The um, the chat search.
Yes.
So I'm going to be doing something as well with the. Search chat, we uh implemented a full text search index. And it looks to work really well with searching chat. When I implemented it, there was like a bit of slowness for about like a couple minutes, but what I. I had to look into it and I found that it was because. SQL Server decided to start building the index in the background immediately. So it like caused slowness to that and some other queries in the background without us, without letting me know. So. Yeah.
That won't happen again?
Nope, it, because it just had to do, it was just a one-time deal. Of building the index and looking at here, chat members by name. Yeah, it's. Let me go here. So yeah, you can see this was like yesterday when I implemented it and. Yeah, it looks like there's a couple that took a while, but I'll try and figure out what's going on there now. But um, you can see that there were a lot more slow, uh, slow queries in the past couple days. Especially, let me expand it twenty-four hours, so. I'll see how this performs today compared to these, like any of these flare-ups means that it was running slow.
Yeah, okay, I see.
So, we'll, we'll see, hopefully it's better.
Okay, it'll, it will be a little bit different behavior, like if I type. Some letters, it'll find letters in the middle of a name?
Which it looked like it, I'll have to see, cause it looked like it was like searching letters in the middle, like I, I like to search O H N.
Yeah.
But um. It was finding like Johnson and stuff. So. I don't know why it was telling me otherwise, I mean, the, yeah, the chat search right now is really fast.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I'm in production. And uh, what I'd like to do is I want to perform the same logic to on the. Add friends screen, people finder, it's gonna be the same logic. I think I can really speed up that query as well. Using the same logic, because now the index is already created for the same tables that we would be querying.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna make sure, I'm gonna do that and that logic would also apply to. The SOT, add SOT screen, where you search for users. And that would also apply. I think those are the only screens I can think of where you would search for users.
Tagging friends.
Tagging, well, yeah.
Photos, tagging and check-ins.
Okay, the tagging, I'll make sure I go through those and that we're applying the same optimizations as well, and I'm optimistic that it's going to be a lot better.
Where is it live now? If I was to like create a new chat, is that where it's live?
Yeah, that red plus chat button.
Yeah, it's pretty fast, okay.
Yep, um, ran some tests, Ismail yesterday and um. It went average of one point six seconds to point eight, point nine seconds. So that's like half off, which, sweet.
Okay.
So uh, I'll see if we can get similar improvements out of the other queries.
Okay, I just did a random search in there for a Chris and I'm wondering, I just sent you a screenshot, why? I have one person named Chris, I don't know this Chris. And then a bunch of group chats, why do you think? That was my result?
So, uh, this is if you're searching for a chat, so. Let me, let me figure out how the best way to explain this is. Um. For the group chats, they're appearing because there is somebody named Chris in that chat.
Yeah, that part I know, we've always had that, but why did I get one? Individual at the top versus, like if I go, if I scroll down lower, then I get all the groups. With Chris in it.
Do you have an open DM with Chris Greenstead?
No.
So if you tap it, there's no DM active?
Well, he must have messaged me on August sixth, it looks like.
And that, that's why he's at the top, because you have an active DM with this user. That's the logic that was going beforehand, was if you have an active DM with a user, they're at the top of the list. So you have to go below the groups and we have a lot of groups and Chris is a common name. That now, yeah, at the bottom of the list, you would start to see the Chris users. And uh, like, we found our countdown is vi- is visible because we, we do remove the public groups. But all these groups that you're showing me are private groups, they're big groups, but they're private groups, so technically they would show here. Unless we add additional logic to hide these groups when they go over a certain member count.
Right, okay, okay, so far so good, then let's keep it as is. Looking good, what else you got?
Uh, yeah, so those are just gonna apply to some of the other searches, we're gonna fix up the SoundCloud thing. And I have some PRs and merch from Amet, and I think that's it.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you, Jerry. All right. All right, um, uh, Ismail, how about uh, update, please?
Yeah, sure, so a few things worked on yesterday, um. So first of all, um, I worked on the debounce and members, um, and that one, so there's. We had two searches in, in there, one where you search. Before you click see more. And then the one you need, click see more, so I fixed both or. Tweak both of them where it's more aligned with what we have in Spotlight, so that. Loading behavior, the three hundred millisecond delay and so on, which made it feel a little faster. Um, but then as Jerry was saying, I noticed that. Uh, the chat one was a little slower, so he told me that he was already working on it and as he mentioned, so now that's a little faster, so in combination. It, it should be overall a better experience. Um, now the one when you click see more, that one's faster than the one for, where you're on like before you click it. On the, when you first open that screen, um, and that's the chat one.
That, that one's, you said was. Faster?
Yeah, well, then they, they use different APIs, I think. What I, as I was seeing, um.
Did you do any changes to it?
Yeah, I did to both, like I said, I added the loader, I added instead of a five hundred millisecond delay, I pushed it down to three, three hundred, which feels a lot more natural. As a user.
Okay.
Um, and I added the loader and all that good stuff, um, but as far as speed, it's, yeah, now it's just type the backend.
But it's, but it's both faster and more better in your opinion?
Yeah, a little bit more responsive, so you, you have to wait like three hundred milliseconds instead of five hundred, so that, that's barely noticeable when you're typing. Um, and I added the loader to show at the right time, so as soon as you start typing, it'll show the loader, it didn't have a loader to begin with. Um, and it would, it didn't have the no results screen, which now it does, if it doesn't find anything, it would just show you a blank screen. No, and like, yeah, you, 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 more user feedback overall as they're searching. Um. So, that being said, um, I also fixed the re- replay button on SoundCloud. Um, where if you're, if you have replay only for one song and you go to the next or the previous one. It removes it, so it doesn't carry on, it only keeps it if you have replay all on. Which means you have the whole playlist on replay. Uh, just something Chantel pointed out to me, um, which I guess other apps do, so. Um, now. Other things I worked on was, so the one, there was one thing that Wells, it was related, I think, to the changes you made for the model. Um, the styles, I think you, you changed some native styles or something like that, um. Now that's. Creating or making the Android app fail when I tried to build it. Um, and that's on my local, I still didn't even try to create a full build with it, like uh, to, to publish it, like when I just try to build it on my phone. It's complaining about the styles, um, and it's causing the build to fail, so. It's complaining about the styles, um, and it's causing the build to fail, so in order for it to work, I have to have to like add a line of code to remove those styles and so on, so, um. Not sure, I'm not too familiar with Android native, so if you want, just take another look, make sure you can actually build the app. With like, delete everything, make a fresh build, see if it builds for you. Um, and me, maybe wanna clear it though, because like, I had honestly AI just remove everything that's causing, was causing the break, and I was able to build it, but I don't know how that would affect your changes.
Hmm.
So, um.
So you, you can't build it on Android, but I presume Wells could, obviously, because he's worked on it.
Yes, sir. But also, familiar with Android native, so I have to, I had to ask Amin for help in a lot of scenarios to get that working, so perhaps it might be a good idea to have Amin do the final look at that and see if he can spot why it might not be working for Ismail, because even though it works on my machine, uh, I'm not sure I will be able to spot exactly why it is working here and not there.
Well, you also did, did you do a fresh build after you did those changes, because like it might work with the existing build, if you tweak it, but if you do a fresh install, then you run into a problem.
Um, yeah, I believe I did a fresh install, because uh, we were having to do a lot of different changes, so I had to keep rebuilding the app in order to make sure that the, the stuff I kept was still making it work, but
Yeah.
I bloated into stuff that was not needed. So I don't know, it might be a good idea to have Amin have a final look at this, he seems to be more familiar with Android at all.
Did you do a fresh install, I mean, as well?
Yeah, um, I did not, but I was with, when we were working on this, I was with Wells.
Mm-hmm.
On a call, and he did like a fresh install by deleting the Android folder and removing everything, a new one, yeah, they had it built for him, I remember that. So I don't know what's going on, and yeah, um, I'll, I'll look into it and see why they didn't build, so did it, this is dev for you, Sam, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is just dev.
Okay, okay, so yeah, alright, I'll, I'll see what's going on there.
Okay, um, that being said, um, I moved on to, oh, well, I guess since we're on Android, let me just, uh, so when it comes to the model not taking up or the model kind of not taking up the full screen, um, here, I'm gonna send a photo on Dev, so you guys can have a kind of more of an understanding of what I am saying.
Also a question for you, is, were you, did that code, that PR Wells did for the modal color change, did that make it into, did it get merged? Or is it still?
Yeah, that's merged then, that's in Dev.
And it now, now you can't build on your Android.
Well, I have a way to get around it, but, yeah, as is, it's.
Did we, did we did like an, a build, or like an Android build for, for QA?
Did we?
Now I'm asking like, do you, have, have we did that?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't attempted to do one, no.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and also Ismail.
I was just trying to build it on my phone, like, you know how you can connect your phone to Android Studio and build it there?
Yeah, also, yeah, I wanted just to know if it's like fading on the GitHub uh, workflow, like.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not sure, I haven't, I haven't attempted that.
Okay, if we did not do that, then, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I got the screenshot.
Um, yeah, so as you guys can see, um, Android has done a very good job on fixing their annoying um, annoying nav bar problem that we, that was haunting us for the longest time, so this is the new Android. Uh, the latest one, I think, uh, which I don't know what the number is, but as you can see so you, 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 do you guys remember the Wells, uh, the problem Wells was pointing out yesterday, had hot and how it looked?
Yeah, it was up too high.
Yeah, so that's, that's what, that's how the Android iOS was, or OS was, 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 was handling it, like the, 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 the that, that's how they handled those problems in the past, now the new system they have is doing a really good job, and like, oh they just cut it off, you have that white space at the bottom, you have all the content of the app in the middle, and you have the status bar at the top. Which, and then if you remove the status bars, just, it'll take up the full screen, or I'm sorry, if you remove the three buttons.
Okay.
You make it like iOS, so the new Android is handling this properly in our app, and I've tried all the models, and they look like, it would either create this, or these buttons would be at the end hovering, um, so in either case, you know, they looked fine, in my opinion. Um, now, that being said I'm not sure, how much time do you wanna waste time on the older Android, or since now Android's doing a much better job at handling this?
So, the problem exists only on older Androids?
Under Android software, not the, not the device, it's the software, if you have the old software, you would have, if you have the new software. It would look like, it would look like this, how you're saying, which I think looks fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, like they introduce something, they're calling it edge to edge, basically like, making it seem, seem like how iOS doing it. They're calling it edge to edge, and I think this is like with the Android fifteen. So any uh, Android fifteen will work fine with the models, but prior to that. Uh, but I did some work there to, to handle some of the models, I think this one was new. Uh, before I did, um, to handle, um, this issue on the older, um, uh, Androids. So, right now Ismail, it's like, I would assume in this model, like there's some conditions, if it's Android, apply this margin, if it's not.
Hmm, I don't think so, no, there isn't any platform specific code, I think, uh, but the thing is, you don't have to have it with the new Android, it's just like
Yeah.
It's just fine on both devices without you having to manually like customize it for both.
Mm-hmm.
Which is nice.
Um, a question then, so the screenshot Wells was working off of, that was provided by Chantel, right? Does it, does that mean Chantel?
Was it by Chantel, or was it by, I think it was, he was on his emulator?
Uh, I sent you on my emulator, but on the, on the issues on GitHub, you can see images from Shinto, and also I believe Todd.
So, did Todd and Chantel, do they both have that old of a Android OS? That, that doesn't seem right.
My operating system is thirteen.
Huh.
Yeah, um, uh, as I was saying, those new stuff were, were introduced for Android fifteen.
Fifteen, and they're on seventeen, all right, or is that?
Thirteen.
No, I mean, the, the Lewis one would be what? Fifteen, seventeen, for, what's the highest you can get on Android?
Hmm, let me check.
I thought it was seventeen, I might be wrong.
Oh, I thought it was only like fourteen or fifteen.
Like sixteen, like the highest, the highest is like sixteen. John, I'm not sure, um, I have like this memory, like you and this male worked on this regarding duplicates because of imagination?
Uh, duplicate messages, or duplicate what?
The groups, like at the top of the lobby.
Duplicate groups at the top of the lobby, I don't think I've ever seen a duplicate group at the top of the lobby, we did, we did not work on that.
Alright, okay, so yeah, Chantel, I'll, I'll look into it and see why, it seems like maybe because of imagination. If it's not backend, the, that's sending at the working group, it might be a imagination issue, like we with imagination with the same index, so, so, yeah, um, I'll look into it.
Chantel, you see two, uh, two duplicate groups at the top lobby?
It's like three or four, let me see how many is actually on here.
Yeah, um, I have a question, like, did you start seeing the imagination, uh, sorry, did you start seeing the duplicates as like page nineteen? Or they were there before even page nineteen?
Um, so basically, I was just like scrolling to see, because I noticed one that I'm not in, that I was like, oh, I didn't remember anything about it, so I started scrolling. And so then it just came up, like right with it, and I was like, wait, I feel like I just saw this.
Yeah. Okay, seems like a imagination, because of imagination, we have.
Okay, no, that's separate from what you're looking into with the events, right?
Yeah, I'm only building the app as, as we're talking, I'm waiting on it to be rebuilt.
Okay, I'm still trying to find it. Screenshots are there, which I can't find for some reason.
Yeah, I see the issue, um. Um, I'm not sure why, um, this event. Be there, no, should not be in. Yeah, this is a front-end issue, because like the creator is there, I saw it, then it's not.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, this is a front-end, uh, and I don't know when this starts to happen, so, let me see.
So you're still looking into that, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll look into this and I'll look into the other issue, until Sammy, but yeah, as for my update, this is as far as it goes, so uh, I'll fix those and go back on Android for the new Archivator. And what, it's all good, if there's an issue, so we can do a build with it, for it.
Okay, yeah, sounds good, um. Well, I'll, I'll let you know if anything comes up, I think. And may have been something else. I don't know, I can't think of anything right now, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then did we still need to help Wells out with his Android issue, I can't remember, uh, because Ismail couldn't build it because of the
I was, yeah, I told Ismail, like, um, I was able to build it, and Wells able to build it. It's only Ismail, maybe something wrong with Ismail's environment, so I told him when he's back, he sent me the error this is having. I can, uh, jump in there and see what's going on with his environment.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, Wells, let's get your update and then see um, how things are going there. Are you there, Wells?
Yes, sir.
Can we get your update?
Yes, so the PRs open were merged, and there are two more PRs open. Uh, one, let me show on the screen, so it's easier. So, yeah, the share profile tax centering, the the native alert team that we were discussing earlier today is merged, and by the way, development is working for me, for the latest features and everything else, and for Amin also, so as, as Amin mentioned. That's, uh, something that's happening specifically to Ismail, um, so we're gonna be looking at it, I believe, more, I mean, right, since he's the one that has the most, uh, expertise with Android native.
Hmm.
And there is a PR open for the sender name on Android. So you can see here on the right, this is how it looks in iOS, and this is how it looked before on Android. So for the smaller messages, the name would be logged here. And also for a lot of messages, the name would be too far up. And in some cases, it would look like it was part of the message above and not of the message below, so it was a little bit confusing.
Right.
And it, it took me some extra time to do this, I finished this pretty late. But I figured it would be a, a good idea to have this PR open by yesterday, since it was a really important issue, so I stayed up too late to, to finish it. And this is how it is supposed to be looking currently, currently not, uh, when, when this PR is merged. Uh, so this is Android, and this is iOS, so they look mainly the same.
Yep, um, I would say the one, yeah, where your cursor is, one little small, could, little, could do a little extra space above, uh, below the timestamp, it's kind of like. Yeah. It's, it's, it's minor.
You, you mean between this and this, right?
Yeah, see on iPhone, it's more spaced a little bit.
Uh-huh.
It's pretty close, I wouldn't even worry about it, it's, it's so, it's really minor, don't worry about it, so how, why was it, why was this Android specific to this problem?
Yeah, so on, on Android, uh, some things are handled differently, so some stuff were implicit here, and it was working on iOS, because iOS deals with that in that way. And in here, since it was implicit, Android was handling it in a different way. So I had to find exactly why it was happening, so here, for example, uh, the name. Uh, the space that the name is occupying is all of this, all the way to the bottom. So it is not any margin, not any padding or anything, it is the height of the component here, or the name. So what I did is, for Android, we set, we, we, the, the height that we have in iOS. I am explicitly saying it, so Android respects that, so they both have the same height. So they look the same in both iOS and Android.
Okay.
And also, uh, it was respecting the height of the, sorry, the width of the whole component for setting the name, so sh- show just like here, so since the bubble ends here, the thing, here, so it will be clogging. So I set a minimum width for this to have, and this minimum width uh, make it so it cannot be smaller than a certain amount, so it cannot be smaller than this, for example. So the area the component is occupying right now is this, and it has the same height as on uh, iOS, so now we will always have the width for not.
Very, okay, great, much, much better, thi- this needs to get reviewed, the PR?
Yes, sir, uh, I mean, put a comment here, uh, I mean, regarding the comment you put there about making it uh, specifically for Android, since this is not specific. Uh, I, I left a comment there, not sure if you see it, but let me know what you think on it. Because I, I, I believe that even though there's, the changes are applied on both platforms, they don't necessarily cover iOS, they're just making explicit how it was already on iOS, so iOS looks the same. In the screenshot, as we see.
I mean, yeah, if it's not.
So just leave it there.
Yeah, well, that's okay, that's fine, um.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yep, so I can, what I mean?
Yeah, you can.
Sounds good.
Okay, great, so that will make it in the next build, I mean?
Yep.
Okay, nice, that's a nice trick, it's not a good defect on Android, I'm glad you fixed it.
Thank you, also, there are, there were, there was not a PR fix. Thank you. Also, there are, there were, there was not a PR fixed for the. Um, people tagged, this one, the difficulty was destined. Cause, uh, on, on Keyway currently, we have no public groups. With people tagged and I couldn't necessarily find the, the functionality of tagging people. So I switched to the development version, to the, the production version, just to navigate through the public groups until I found something. That could show me the issue and I found this on the Disneyland public group, someone posted a photo and tagged people there. And I know you will not be able to see that on Meet, but, uh, there is another screenshot here on the issues. It is in the closed ones. For here, so if you'll see, if you look really close into it. The arrow there was disconnected with the thingy and it, it was noticeable on the bare eye when you are looking into the device. So I found it and fixed it, so there is a fix for it right now, it should be. Merged together, the, the both of them. So, i- if this is approved, it will be also on the next build, so it will look a little bit sharper on the, the people tagged. This was kind of ready. By like yesterday, but it, it was hard to test it out and find the scenario and where it happened, so I could have the certainty. That it was working into the fine adjustments, so now it is fine tuned and tested. So the PR is open. And also on the issues, I cleaned up, uh, some of them, so the, the issues that were fixed. And so are here on the closed and I also grouped the issues that had the same stuff. Uh, together, so for example, the.
Okay, when it comes to the modal, um, yeah, di- did you do work on this? I thought. You did.
Yeah, no, um, yesterday on, on, on stand up, I asked for Ismael's input on it. And he mentioned he would take a look at it and this is what he brought in, in today's stand up. So this is only happening on, on older Android versions, so. Um, yeah, he brought the point on perhaps we might not want to be looking into it, but it is, I, I don't. I- it might be something we, we actually want to take a look at. But, uh, regarding the organization, I closed all the issues that this was the only point missing. And grouped them in a new issue regarding that matter. So all these, these different places here are basically the same issue, they are basically. The same safety area thingy, so whether or not we proceed with that, it is a little bit more organized in that matter. Regarding the issues are together. And right now, yeah, I mainly just finished the. The PR I, I was just showing here for the public group tagging arrow. So I'm looking into the next one to be implemented here, perhaps you may have an input in that, John?
On which?
On the, on which should be the next issue I solve. Um, I, I have more or less something rega- regarding the. They share something with, however, um, I could not reproduce a scenario in which it doesn't look good.
Okay, um, so, show me which ones you got pending?
Yeah, so one I got pending is this one, the share something with someone. Uh, in where it goes all the way up while there is available space here for it. Um, something I, 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 I was considering doing is making sure we have a percentage space here on top. So it respects that percentage on the device height in order to making it always be there.
Well, I wonder what happens when the keyboard comes up.
Yeah, I want to react to.
Cause that would push something up or cover something. And then again, this is probably a phone with Android thirteen or less.
Yeah, must be, I believe this is Shinto's.
Yeah, cause I think that safe, safe area on top would probably not be colliding, but. Um, what else, what other ones you have?
Uh, this is one I have stuff open and also. The other one that is lower priority, I started taking a look, but I didn't go further, so this, but this is low priority, right?
Yeah.
Look sharp.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not too bad.
So I, I don't know, I, perhaps, uh, the game thingy. This one is the one that has a video in which the, the game profile was not showing up.
The what profile?
The game profile, let me, let me see if I find it here real quick. So it is. There's issue here regarding the game profile that when you click on the game.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, why don't you focus on that one?
Okay, yeah, it sometimes doesn't appear, apparently.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, Isshinto here?
Yep, I'm here.
Yep, so Shinto, this here, i- is it like Android specific?
Is it what?
Android specific.
Um, I don't know, let me see on my iPhone.
But it's always happening to you, like you always see it like this?
Yeah, for that game in particular, I don't know if it's all games, I just know that that one was repeatable with that game.
Hey, first expedition thirty three, nice. So it is always on the check-in, right?
Yeah, it's, um, on my iPhone, it's, it's okay, it's appearing as normal.
For that game?
Um, for a game.
And. This screen here, is it the favorite screen, Shinto, or is it the? Checking entertainment?
Check-in, entertainment games.
I see, I see a scenario in which it is working. So let me see for expedition. By the way, what a nice game.
Yeah, it's nice. It's pretty.
I see, indeed, yeah, it is not showing first, but for expedition thirty three. Might be something backend related, perhaps not having that image there, but we have it before, right, so we might get it from source, okay? Yeah, we'll look into it, John.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yep, thanks Wells, and Chantel, um, I sent you some messages, did you get them?
About the UFC. That you want the, you don't want the rainbow one, you want the two girls, you want the two girls is the very first one?
Right.
Okay.
I was also asking where we left off with the group chats and we were gonna try and show that to Jerry.
I didn't, okay, sorry, I didn't see that one at all.
Okay, and then we were, we were asking about it on stand up, but I don't think you heard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I had it all pulled up and then the conversation got distracted. But yeah, I can pull it up.
Okay, yeah, let's take a look at it, Jerry, um, you have a minute? And by the way, thank you Wells for that, let me know if you need anything.
Yep, what's up?
Okay, you wanted to see the designs for what it looks like when, uh, you can see a user's.
Yeah, I would like the link, I think, I think our product pages got approved last night, I got an approval email from Apple.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we got a couple of them.
Mm-hmm, I wanna check those, let me check those URLs real quick.
Oh, yeah, what did we figure out on the, the deep link stuff, debate?
I was hoping maybe, maybe me or myself could test, okay, so I see the monopoly go. Oh, they actually approved the monopoly go, interesting. I did not think they would do that, they rejected me for stuff like that before. Actually, I think about it, I don't know if monopoly, I believe, is actually a public domain now.
Yeah, and there's no paywall, right, you can just.
I was talking about like the monopoly game. Like any references to monopoly, I think is like public domain, because the game's like a hundred years old or something.
Years old, yeah.
Okay, I see, um, does it mean have these links, Chantel?
Maybe, I don't know, I'll send it to him.
Yeah, let me send it to him and see if he can piece them apart.
Your screen stopped sharing, or I don't know if you did, if you were trying to share it.
I really wish I knew why this is happening all the time, it's like recent.
Yeah, just starts dropping, maybe, maybe update Google meets, I don't know, are you, are you using a web-based version of it or app?
Yeah, I'm just using a browser.
Well, I think it's something with Mac, because anytime I like, I've been sharing, see, Amit had this issue this morning and then yesterday I had the same issue. Like when you start screen sharing on a Mac now, it just gets all screwy.
I did just do an update on my Mac, like.
Always with the updates, that's when they get you.
Amit had that issue this morning, I had that issue yesterday, Chantel's having it now.
Okay, well, this was the idea here. For if you visited someone else's profile. The one, one in the middle, that's your profile, that's from your profile, but the one on the right is your friend. And that would be like after you tap on their image, let's say. Which.
Wait, we don't have this in the, um.
We have the one on the, in the middle.
Oh, we have the one in the middle?
Yeah, that's, if, that's if you share your profile.
Um, then, let's see, could we just take that query and reverse it?
Perhaps.
That's what I think, yeah, get user public groups, yeah, we, um, we could probably take that query and just reverse it. So that, that query is already in the, in the app. We just, instead of having it point to our own user, have it point to that user.
Okay, okay, cool, so. Once we're done with the design, it'd be pretty straightforward, I guess, to implement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, cool, good, um. I was thinking. Something else here.
Before that, um, Jerry, would you verify something for me? Um, re- related to your query in the chat for pulling in the topic chat? It seems like the creator, it's not when this query has been called, it's the gift or topic message, messages?
Can you send me the parameters you're running it for, just so I can have data with it?
Mm-hmm, okay.
I have an idea, I don't know if this is a good idea, let me run it by you, Chantel. So let's say you go to. A profile of any, any user's profile. And. Right when you get there. There's like, almost, it's almost like a speech bubble. Some type of bubble like that appears. Next to their profile image, so it, it would, it would overlap, like it would, it would overlay. For a se- few seconds, over like the name and the followers. Depending how big we make this thing, but inside of it, it says. So like if I, let's, I'm on Lisa's profile, for example, and it would say. Lisa, Lisa is in three groups and it just fades away after five seconds. Um, but the speech was kind of like pointing in to the image, so like I would tap the image to. If I was curious.
A speech bubble that comes up. And then it, what?